I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now please remain standing for a moment of silence for the two victims that were shot on Friday. Thank you, please have a seat. Roll call.
Karlovic.
Here.
Rechner.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Grochis.
Here.
Isner.
Here.
I want to quickly make a motion to add under unfinished business to the agenda the subject of the Chestnut Street warehouse, 441 Chestnut Street. So I'll make that motion add to the agenda.
Sorry?
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Okay. An executive session was held prior to council meeting and on July 7th and 10th to discuss personnel matters and verisign. Is there any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Thank you. I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 8th and June 8th and June 22, 2020, and the reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, engineer, COH, health department, and public works. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
So here's a City of Sunbury proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Sunbury, whereas our park and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion on local tax base, increase in tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature. And whereas the City of Sunbury recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational services, parks and recreation resources, and now therefore may it resolve that I, Kurt Karlovic, being mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sunbury City Council members and citizens, hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. I call upon all members of the City of Sunbury and surrounding communities to go out and enjoy your local parks and recreational facilities while practicing safe social distancing. I do make this into a motion. Do I have a second to accept?
Thank you.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
No.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Councilman Rechner, tax exoneration.
On this moment on agenda items?
Who did that?
Who did that?
I missed it very quickly. Thank you.
There are a total of 18 individuals running exoneration list. Fifteen of them are deceased. Twelve of them are receiving SSI and one person is a non-resident. The total amount is $2,233.17. I make a motion that we exonerate.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
I also make a motion that we pay invoices of $168,208.62 from the general fund and $8,207.86 from the liquid fuels. So I make the motion to pay those.
Thank you.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Can I see the COH? See the COH?
Hello. We have a couple resolutions on here, I think. Number 23 is the resolution to appoint the Section 504 officer, which Jody Ocker is your 504 officer. This is just something that you have to do yearly to report Jody as your officer for the CDPG regulation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Second resolution, number 24, is your fair housing resolution. This is yet another yearly resolution that you do just to state that the city will have fair housing and follow fair house policies for the city.
Make that motion. Step.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Your resolution number 25 is your resolution to apply for the CDPG cares funding, which is the CDPG CPG application.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Thank you. The last thing that I have for you tonight is your CDPG federal fiscal year 2020 project review and selection. So the projects that were discussed at the first public hearing, I had sent out a summary sheet that I hope that you all received. The Cameron Park gazebo was brought up, that there is a deficiency in the ramp. That is something that will need to be addressed, whether it's with your CDPG funding or some other funding, which we'll have to list in the application if you do not choose it to be funded with your CDPG funding. But that was brought up as a 504 concern of the ramp being in need of repair. And no cost was provided as to what that would cost.
We can take that off the agenda. We found funding in other places to take care of that.
Okay. Can you have someone email me just how we're going to or how you're going to take care of that? Because I have to build that into the application to show that it's being taken care of.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Sunbury Wetland Ecological and Educational Park, or SWEET, was also mentioned. OPC was provided for $50,000 and then there would be an ER fee and depending. I just put an estimated $4,000 in there for your Davis Bacon related acts. That is all based on how many weeks of construction. So I just put an estimated figure in there, which would bring it to about a $58,000 request. That would meet your LMI criteria for low moderate income citywide. So that would be eligible and fundable. Also, a facade program was brought up. I did speak to the DCD grant manager about this, and he indicated that this really is not a project to be funded with CDPG funds. COH recognizes that this is a very good project. However, they suggest that they apply for Keystone Communities Grant. And the city can apply for that. 133-7 Holdings can apply for it, or SRI can apply for it. But it really does not meet the criteria for CDPG funding. It would benefit a business directly and not a LMI resident of the city. The Susquehanna Avenue... What was that? Okay, the Susquehanna Avenue storm water and sewer separation project was also brought up. That would be a new and different project from the Reagan Street project. This would require a survey to show that you are meeting LMI residents. And we would also need an opinion of probable cost for the application and a work scope to show what the work scope would be. The survey would need to have volunteers from the city and the sewer authority to select and give a list basically of which households and residents are on this line. And then if there's more than 100, it would be a random sampling. If it's less than 100, it will be a full survey. And COH would provide a... We draw up the survey before you. We train volunteers. We would need to get that survey done before we can have a final hearing to select the project, because we have to make sure it's eligible. A sidewalk project was brought up, and that would be a direct benefit to LMI. So you would need to do an income survey, an intake process for each household when you get to the project to make sure they are eligible. You'd also, if you want to put it in the application, need to provide a unit cost for what would cost to replace a piece of sidewalk and then an approximate amount of how many pieces of sidewalk will need to be repaired around the city.
Where's that?
Slum light was also mentioned.
Excuse me, Mitzi, that one isn't showing on the spreadsheet. You print it out.
Okay, so it might not have printed it out on the first page, but it should be on the full spreadsheet that I sent you, because it was listed on there.
What was the cost of that project, the estimated act?
Slum light was also mentioned, and that would be, you would need to determine where the slum light property or properties were. You'd also need to pay for probable costs on that as well.
What was the, what was the cost for the sidewalk one? What were they asking for?
I was, I was not providing cost.
All right. So how does that work if that project was to be selected?
Well, we have to not actually select projects tonight if you want to consider it. We could just table the actual selection and schedule it for the next meeting, and that will give time to come up with a unit cost and an approximate number from the sewer authority of how many households are in that area.
I have a question on the LMI survey. Once you've completed one, how many years is that good for? Or must every project have one?
Every project has to have one down unless you're meeting the exact same beneficiary areas.
And if that would be the case, how long is the survey good for? Reagan Street did that area, is what I'm getting at.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Reagan Street did that survey when we applied for the Reagan Street project. And this is phase two of that project.
According to Linda, it would not be phase two because that project used citywide LMI and there was no survey done. She qualified it as citywide because it was flood mitigation.
Okay, thank you.
It was not an LMI direct beneficiary project.
You're correct.
Are there any others? No. So on the sidewalk idea, if we decide that we're going to table that one because we have too much more information to do, to get to, to get the opinion of probable cost, can the council say, you know, kind of table that one for now and not include it for this year?
Well, sure. You don't have to include any of them. This is just a summary of what was discussed. And then you get to select from these projects. It's just that you can only select a project that was discussed at the first public hearing.
Right. So our options right now are to select certain projects. The Susquehanna Avenue project would have to be selected pending the completion of the survey and validation, verification of eligibility of the project, correct?
Correct.
Like, how much money do we, do we have to work with here? I see your net availability for projects is $251,000. So that one would take up potentially all of the CDPG entitlement?
We don't have to work that. Can we choose?
Can we choose the amount for each project?
That's what I'm saying. So we, I'm just trying to clarify what our options are, what your options are. Mitzi can clarify what the options are.
You can choose any amount, no amount. You can choose a project, not choose a project.
We should make a motion to...
There's multiple projects, put your money out.
Well, the wetlands, when we do Susquehanna Avenue...
190... 193, 298.
Cool, how much?
193, 298. Did the full sweep?
You have to speak up longer.
Uh?
Stick longer.
Sorry. 193, 298 will be left after, they should know that, after if we did sweep. And then the rest went to Susquehanna. And then if Susquehanna was not eligible, we could come back and revisit that sidewalks project at that point, correct?
But it won't be. The whole city is LMI.
But if, well, yeah, there's probably a lot of money down there. We can, so I'll motion that.
So you're...
Yeah, I'll motion to approve it like that.
So just to clarify, your motion is to accept the $58,000 for the sweep and then the...
57, 773, what she, what the request is, and the remaining amount to Sunbury, to Susquehanna.
What's the total cost to do that one dance? Finish that up? What's the total cost to finish one dance? This is just phase one.
Yeah, this is just phase one. It'll give a park right there in the center of the park, the property.
So $57,000 to complete that project?
This, this 57, 773 will complete an entire miniature park on that four and a half acre partial. But that's not the entire project. That's a phase of the entire project. This, this will include off-street parking, water, water fountain for drinking for the public. redoing the old Ford Railroad embankment there. There's going to be educational signs on there. And at the end of the railroad closest to the wetlands, there'll be a, like a pavilion pushed out into the wetland portion to sit with multiple benches.
So of that 57, 773, does that include any type of equipment to maintain that property or is that just to get that property?
This is to create a park.
So who's going to maintain that and with what equipment then? That's my question.
It is back up. $10,000 is roughly for the engineer.
Okay, yeah.
When we clean the railroad tracks up area, which is it was grown up.
Yeah.
I might say, okay. Now, a little bit that I researched this so far, everything that's being done is making sure maintenance-wise that there's no real wood. It's all treks and there's other products out there now because we want to make it maintenance-free as we can.
And if it is vandalized, as easy as possible to replace it, correct?
I don't know where you're coming from because he said, I mean, he'll cut it off for free, he said, so.
On his own time, right?
Yeah.
I'm just saying with that, obviously, we're going to be taking care of that. I'm just saying with, that's just one more additional cost coming in. With our equipment and things like that.
We're looking into that.
Okay, that was my question.
We want to make sure maintenance-wise, every 10, 20 years, whenever you're placing a bunch of the pressure tree, they actually make law, or it's going to be concrete boards today and also concrete.
Long-term type stuff that lasts longer, yeah.
That's the part we will look at.
All right, so we have a motion.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
No.
Isner?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Jody, can you clarify, they made a motion to select the project for sweep for 57, 773, is that correct?
That's correct. And the remainder of what we have available to the Susquehanna Avenue project?
Would that be 193, 298?
Yes.
Okay, and that's continuing upon the survey, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. June 27 of this year, we received a resignation letter from Officer Marcus Duarte. This is just an admin thing that we have to do right now, make a motion to accept this resignation letter.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
All right. Chief Hare, if you want to talk about Officer Doyle.
Officer Aaron Doyle was hired July, I think, even last year. He has completed his one year of field training, and he was recommended by the sergeant to be retained as a full-time officer. So he's got a kind of a route to be accepted as a full-time police officer.
All right, so make this into a formal motion to accept Officer Doyle as a full-time officer.
Grochis?
Yes.
Isner? Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right. So we are already in July, and there's been some discussions started regarding the upcoming budget season for 2021. And the implications that COVID-19 has had on the city and possible for next year's budget. So I would like us to discuss kind of what materials we would like from the treasurer's office where we didn't start this year's budget season earlier than we did for last year. Is there anything, any specific information that the council would like from the treasurer's office?
I would like to see revenue over the last three to five years versus expense over three to five, just, just as of year-to-date. Not as a year whole, but as of year-to-date, just to kind of see where we're off to this year. So we can get an idea as of rest of the year, what to expect as far as what's been coming in. I know the second part of the taxes are big, but just to kind of see if we're behind, if we're not behind, just to set us up for a good end of the year going into next year. Think that would put us in better spot.
We are behind about $200,000 right now, but I'll get that information out of each of them here. I'll email them tomorrow morning so you can justify what the past couple years looked like.
We're behind what, budgeted or behind?
Budgeted, working due coming day.
Is that year-over-year?
That's for this year compared to last year.
We're $200,000 behind this year's...
Compared to last year and this year, yes. Chris, we have a bit of a pull, as you know.
Yeah.
We normally gross between 50, 55. We're hoping about 35, maybe 40 because the period is shortening. And of course, the situation. We need to cut back in staff, so we're trying to balance that out so we break even percent. Okay, we're never really breaking even. But now, the only critical part is we discussed it today, is ice skating season. Now, Susquehanna and Bucknell, which is two colleges that play at our rink, they already canceled football. They don't know about hockey yet, winter sports. So we lose, it's a youth hockey, a former college hockey, they're all setting back in the loop right now, making decisions. That would be crucial to the income line budget. How about 55 to 60,000? Pardon? 55 to 60,000 in three. Bucknell, Brooklyn, youth hockey. Oh, oh, okay, and here you go. Yes, and so, we normally gross to... 240, 250. Right. So, if you make it... I grant you, I'm sorry, well, if we don't have the season, it would be a lot of savings because of the cost of operations and so forth, labor costs and so forth. So it won't be a total, but we probably show out that 240,000, whatever we gross, okay? Probably showing across the board 85 to 100, actually profit out of that. So. Well, it's also the income taxes down because people are on bourbon, so, you know, I'm setting 40, 50,000 dollars a pop once a week from Keystone Road again, 12, 13. So, you know, that's, that's where, basically, I see where a lot of everything's happening.
I suppose since I got on council, one of the things we talked about, especially with Jody coming on, was some real forecasting on budgeting. You know, actually taking all the numbers, writing them down, looking at it by department, making sure we're allocating funds properly, and just starting the process a little early. So I think that's all you're asking for, is just be able to have a, outside of this meeting, an actual meeting dedicated to this.
Starter budget meeting.
Yeah, basically start at the beginning of October, but if you guys want paperwork, that's fine. You're better off, you are. So I'll get it out to you in one week.
And you said we're $200,000 less revenue right now?
Just 200, yeah. Compared to last year, we have a little over revenue.
And with the information that you have right now, how do you think next year's revenue is going to be looking with the businesses being closer, X amount?
Well, you know, the car dealerships, you know, when they're not selling cars, that's a chunk of change, you know? We usually get 30, 40,000 from some motor or somebody else, you know, plays out standards. So if people are going to sell product, that's bringing in, when they're losing a lot of that American town tax.
Cars don't look great right now.
Yeah, right now, they're crazy, absolutely. But my problem is, they can get inventory in. So there's sound ones on their lot, but anything new is tough for these people to get in. And I've been talking to dealerships about this, so that's what they're telling me.
Gotcha.
So I just want to make sure I understand.
Basically, all...
So basically, Kevin, what we budgeted for, even if we're under budget, we're still $200,000 less than the actual revenue covered or extended.
In my eyes, where I looked at today, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All you need, seriously, just watch your spending. I mean, everybody knows we're in a tough period in time right now. Watch what you spend. If you don't need it, don't buy it. If you need it, buy it.
I think it would be nice to be able to forecast it so we know, we don't have to watch spending, we can plan spending.
You can say forecast is, you know, that's a great thing to do, but if people are working, they're not paying their taxes, they're not paying their income, or they're not going out purchasing. So you can look at all you want, but if this COVID-19 gets any worse, you're not going to get that money in, plain and simple. And people who pay their taxes right now are people who have money and have a steady income. I mean, we're doing well with that, with taxes. But common sense, Governor, you know, about watch your spending, bottom line.
All right, so when you, when you project a deficit in, in revenue, less, less than ideal performance in revenue, you might want to be able to identify certain line items that you're going to, you're going to decrease by a certain percentage. You could do a peanut butter spread across. Let's decrease all your line items by 3%. So you have to make sure you come in under that. There are line items that are underspent right now, and there's some that might be overspent right now. And I think that that analysis is what, what we're looking for.
But overall budget-wise, everybody's doing good. Seriously, spending-wise, everybody's doing good. That's what we should be doing at that meeting, those discussions right here.
Exactly, what Jody just said, yeah. That's, I think that's all we're asking for tonight, is just to have that meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there are...
So we want to schedule a meeting then, a work session, or how do you do that? Do you...
I'd like to schedule a work session.
Well, let's get the big work going first, and then see where we're at, so we can make suggestions in every part.
I don't believe it'd be until, I think, in August or something.
Oh.
I was, I was thinking like a, one month out from now.
Yeah, a month, yeah, like mid-August or something. So we, gives us plenty of time to get the information and then come back a month. Have it be maybe on Monday outside of council, every Monday between council meetings.
We won't see a big impact on...
Towards them before, and I'll give that to you.
And chief will be prepared for...
We'll make a date then and just publicize it, if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. All right, Councilman Brosas.
A wage increase for Paul Russo going from $10 an hour up to 15. Steve, could you just clarify why and justify that increase? Does everyone's aware why people be getting that?
Paul Russo was hired here to see how things would work out. He is a retired UPS truck driver. Things have worked out incredibly well. He's been with the city for over a year. He is now running equipment. He is a CDL driver again, so he can run all my big trucks and everything else that I need him to do. He mows brass for us on bigger mowers. He also pulls wrenches on every single piece of equipment I have down there. He is an invaluable asset to me. I would also mention he is a part-time, involving classed, that does not require benefits, which is a humongous number. He also runs a sweeper for me. He is one of the most valuable people I have at the shop. The $10 an hour was originally set up to be, let's see what happens. We see what happened is he's very underdone. He needs a raise.
Okay, so what would be the recommendation from the city treasurer, since we're $200,000 less in revenue? And two council meetings previous from this one, I believe, was, Councilman Brosas, correct me if I'm incorrect, I'm sure you will. You wanted a pay increase for all members of your department at that time, and it was denied?
That is correct, sir.
And now you're trying to bring up two of the employees to get a pay raise, and the one so far is a $5 jump. And we should be cutting the cost right now, especially when we're going into the 2021 budget. And we should be cutting the costs right now, especially when we're going into the twenty twenty-one budget, please let me finish. Twenty-one, twenty-one budget season, to make sure that we are adequately budgeting for the taxpayers' money, as you always say, for next year's budget season. So I would ask that the council deny this motion that's about to be brought forward so that we can formulate a plan for all the city employees to correct their wages for the twenty twenty-one season.
But no, you go back.
And that's my plan.
Mister Mayor, the only problem is, this man, I did some research and at that council meeting, he does, just like Steve said, all those other departments, and he's the type of gentleman with the five dollars, I know it sounds like a lot, but he was way undervalued at ten dollars, I've been, I've been ashamed to offer that man, but they didn't know his qualifications at the time, apparently. And he, he deserves it, Mister Mayor, I know we're in crunch time, but we don't wanna lose that man.
The only thing I would say is that, is that we have a lot of valuable cities and a lot of valuable employees within the city and we were requested just to kind of see what everyone's making as far as hours of wages. If he was to jump that high, he would make more than seventy-five, eight percent of our city employees that have been with us for twenty, thirty years. And I get, and I've talked to you, I get the value of it, I get, I just, I understand the value of one person to a department, but until we do a stamp program and until you validate everything, my only fear is jumping high and feeling that these other employees now, the mindset could be, I, I don't know, it will be, but could be, hey, wait a second, this guy's only been here a year, I've been here twenty, I get what he does is valuable for that department, but how is what I do not as valuable for my department as what he does for that? That you're paying me, in some cases, four or five dollars less.
And by the same token, now, Chris, you've been in insurance business, you know what it costs us for insurance of this gentleman down there?
You're talking about benefits?
Yes.
Well, most of these other people I'm talking to aren't taking benefits either.
All right, give me somewhere.
I don't wanna break the news to you.
Well, besides that point, also, if this gentleman would leave because of what his current rate is, it would cost us double what his salary is now to hire a full-time, a full-time person to replace him to what he does. So I know it's a big raise, but if he would leave to replace him, would cost him, I mean, someone with a CDL license, being a mechanic, being able to do what he does, even come onboard for the city, it'd cost him at eighteen to twenty dollars an hour to even be competitive with anybody else out there, I mean.
So is this, is this employee threatening to leave if we don't give him a raise?
No, I'm, there is no such thing as a threat out there, I'm just saying, for someone at his skill level, it's just something to think about. Like, you can vote the way you want and you can discuss it all day long, I'm just saying, I just wanna make the mo, I just, for argument's sake, yeah, I'll just make the motion to give him that increase from ten dollars up to fifteen. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Karlovic?
No.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
And then going on to Michael Long.
This is a very immature thing to do tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh going on to Michael Long, from fourteen, twenty up to fifteen dollars an hour. Steve, uh same thing, could you just say why he deserves that and why it must?
Wait, wait, he's going from to what?
Fourteen, twenty to fifteen, which is eighty cents.
Okay, so why are you only wanting to give eighty cents raise to someone that's been here over a decade and five-dollar raise to someone's?
Well, if you checked the last meet, well, the last time I brought this up, Mister Mayor, it was more than that. But when you said before, we should look at our spending, and the same thing goes again for this man. Steve, could you?
Part of what it is, Mister Mayor, is, is the qualifications. Mike Long does not have a CDL. Mike Long cannot work on equipment, he doesn't have a skill set for it, okay? So there are certain things that Paul Russo brings to the table that Mike Long does not. What Mike Long brings to the table is a really good service record with me, okay? What he brings to the table is at two o'clock in the morning, when I get a call from nine-one-one center that there's a problem in this town, I can call him up and he's out there with me in a heartbeat. There's a lot what he brings to the table.
This one I had, I had said last time I would give him a raise, because he's vastly underpaid compared to the rest of the department and he does work hard in there. I tried to get him a raise last year.
And what Steve said about, he is on, literally on-call twenty-four hours a day, Steve would get a call right now, Mike would go out and do what he has to do at all hours under the.
So he's only worth eighty cents pay raise because he doesn't have a CDL and so.
So what do you think that he is?
He earns five dollars an hour, when all of our employees for every department across the board are drastically underpaid.
Hey, I tried to give him more raises last time.
We tried talking to you to beg you to wait until the twenty twenty-one season, which we just started discussing, so we could have a meeting in one month to formulate a plan for twenty twenty-one's budget, since we are two hundred thousand dollars less in revenue this year, Council.
You don't have any now, we're all adults here.
I thought I was trying to raise my voice, but this is very important regarding the, the actions that you're taking regarding.
So I'm, so if that, so if that, oh, yeah, I'm, it's really showing favoritism, okay.
How many other employees are in the Department of Public Works that have a CDL?
Pardon?
How many other employees in the Department of Public Works have a CDL?
Three currently.
Are they up, oh, those other three gonna be getting a pay raise as well?
Already made more, Mister Mayor, and I already had them in for a pay increase, which was denied.
Yes. And, so my question is, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mister Mayor, those other folks were compensated for a CDL. Through, through the years, when Kevin was down there and so.
Always gave a dollar more now.
When they cut the CDL, they got the rate at that time, just so it isn't coming in the backside, he already compensated.
So why did council approve five dollars and that one dollar raise for this person?
Because he went down through the whole list that this guy does for us now.
And to replace him would be a lot more than eleven dollars, it'd be up to eighteen to twenty, really costing taxpayers more, as you said. And I have another question regarding yours about the budget and getting the act in, so what if it comes back more than what the wages are right now? So that means that what we're going to give them, despite of what our financial status is? So if it comes back, every person in my department should make twenty dollars plus, is that what we're gonna pay them then?
That's why there is a budget season, where we review every line item, item by item, including.
Yes, stamp program is designed to basically take the budget that you have and allocate it to the employees that you have. So it's not designed to say you're paying these people four dollars an hour less.
Yeah.
Go find the revenue to do it, it's to be able to take the revenue that you have and allocate it appropriately. We don't know.
But, but at least.
The studies on it, and I know, Steve, you put the work in.
Oh, yeah.
The department, I, I, that you did what all departments will need to do eventually, but the, what the assistance of the Stanford is already gonna do, it gets us there on the entire city.
The stamp program may not be this year.
It may not, that's a good point, it may not.
So, so the stick-to-hand the argument, I'd make the motion to give Michael Long from fourteen, twenty to fifteen dollars down, do I have a second?
Whitehead?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Karlovic?
No. And I wanted on the city's record that I'm not saying no to the work ethic of these two employees, because I do know both of these employees and they are hard workers. My vote no is because it should have waited until the budget season. Ms. Ocker, resolution twenty twenty-six.
Yes, so you have a copy of the proposed resolution there, and this has to do with the application for the Walk Works grant. Walk Works is a collaboration between the Department, Pennsylvania Department of Health and the University of Pittsburgh. Um, the purpose of the fund is to develop active transportation plans. Our grant requested an amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, there is no match that goes with that. The um comprehensive plan, which was adopted in twenty twelve, did have some plans for like a cross-city walk. Um, and then we also, of course, have a riverfront that, that also could be continued as a, as a walk or pedestrian pathway. And so what, what happened is a consultant would be hired and then there would be stakeholders invited to the table to talk about what pedestrian and bicycle paths uh would be needed in the city to, to connect neighborhoods to businesses and, and work. And so um we are, have this grant application in, in progress.
Just had a period of uncertainty, was this found by a grant writer or did this come to us and he's gonna?
We have been talking with um DCNR and CEDOCob prior to hiring the grant writer.
But he's gonna do it.
But he's doing this one, yes.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
So this bill number twenty twenty dash thirteen is called a declaration of taking. This is uh new legislation, it is not code material, so once it would be, if it were passed as an ordinance, it would not actually go into the code of the city's underwriting. This just has to do with a specific property and a small portion of that parcel that needs to be acquired in order to do the Reagan Street uh project and the Front Street intersection improvement there. Um, we had had, gone through the process of notifying, there were two property owners that needed to be notified um by certified mail. We did a um appraisal by a certified agent that was able to do this type of appraisal. The, again, we sent out certified letters to advise them of the appraisal. The one uh property owner accepted that and will uh go ahead and take the, the money offered at the appraisal and uh, and transfer the property to us. However, five hundred North Front Street is the Turkey Hill property. Um, it is owned by someone who does not live in the state and she has been unreachable. We have tried multiple attempts for certified mail and we have, as best we can, confirmed her address. We don't have a phone number, so all of our attempts to contact her have failed, and so now we move into the eminent domain process. And this ordinance would be required in order for the solicitor to pursue eminent domain and trial for eminent domain.
Make that motion.
Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Eisler?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, bill number twenty twenty dash oh-nine, Fire Department, this is a repeal and replace of ordinance number twenty-six, Fire Department, which was adopted in May, on May twenty-third, nineteen twenty-two. Um, this draft has been coordinated with the Fire Department, Mr. Saxton, and uh the Fire Chief uh have worked on it. And um it updates the fire companies that comprise the secondary department. It modifies some of the uh residency qualifications for fire sheet. It modifies the appeal process for disciplinary action and, and then it would go to the Board of uh Representatives for, of the Fire Department and it used to go to the council. Um, and it also establishes a requirement for maintenance fund accountability, uh requesting reports from the Fire Department Treasurer monthly and annually.
Make this first reading into a motion.
Second.
That.
Eisler?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
First.
Yes.
Okay, um, the request for proposals, sent out a couple of weeks ago, a request for proposals to four banks and to uh, the city is seeking to borrow up to one point one two five million dollars at a thirty-year term in payments. And this is for the renovation and construction of the Police Department building. Um, we did only receive, of the four banks that were contacted, we only received one proposal from Northumberland National Bank. You have the full proposal in your packet with more details in it, I just kind of put up there the uh specifics on the uh, on the rate and the and some options on that. So the fixed rate of two point one two for initial five years, option B would be two point five seven for the initial ten years. And then the rate would be renegotiated for additional fixed rate terms. And then there's specifics in there about how the city and the bank will uh negotiate, and if they fail to reach an agreement, then it's seventy-five percent of prime rate. The details are in the document ready for you. So my question is, do you want me to try to get other proposals or how would you like to proceed on this?
First thing is, is concerning that the fact we've got nobody else for a million dollars getting back to us, I don't, that doesn't make sense.
How long did you give them to bring us the information?
Three or four weeks. Uh, First National contacted, they were going to put in a proposal, I didn't, when I didn't receive it today, I reached out to them and they said they wouldn't go beyond a fifteen-year term.
I, I think, I mean, a thirty-year amortization on a two percent loan, pretty good to be able to get that.
Why, why is, why aren't these other banks receiving, but are we making personal touches after the rest of these banks or are we going anywhere possible for local banks or something or anything? I mean, we just can't look at one bank and say, yeah, that's a pretty good deal, well, it is, it would be great. But basically, we shouldn't just take a one, one loan like this and run it with it. We should be getting, going up and talking to the clinic up there at fault, saying, Clint, why aren't we putting this in? You know, or going over and talking to, no, Wayne or over West Milton, say, hey, no. You know, would you guys like, well, service person won't give us a pallet of money, they don't, they don't, they don't spend money, they won't give them all. But going talking to these personally, I said, now, say, hey, how many guys ain't putting this in? I mean, there, there's a reason why they're not doing this, and I'd like to know why.
Well, what did the, what did the RFP ask for exactly? So did it just ask for a loan for this amount or did it say specifically?
It was a thirty years, I think, because, you just said that.
That may be, because.
First National said fifteen years is their max, right there, their max is ten years.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, that's a, that's an adjustable rate or anything.
It's a thirty-year, it's a thirty-year amortization loan, but it's a fix, it's a fixed rate for the first five years, but you can still go over longer.
Well.
Or you take a fixed rate for ten years.
True, and you have to agree no-go trade and back to square one.
But a business loan, that's what you're gonna end up doing, most business loans.
It's like when I get that river wall, John.
No, but also technically it's gonna be higher. Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, like, I have my business loan rate, just don't wanna do that.
Talk to them back.
But I, you know, I can see, Kevin's point, I, I don't know why they didn't give us any proposals and if he's got other contacts and personal contacts to, you know, try to reach out to.
I would ask, um, it doesn't say on here, it says loan, but I'd be wondering if out of one point one two five from the Royal National, would be able to draw, if it were like an equity loan?
The way I read into it today was you're gonna borrow the money like we did with the Riverfront loan, we have that one point one two five million dollars set there. So we start drawing down on that as the, we're probably just rebuilding construction of the property itself. So, you know, you're not borrowing the one point one two. So let's say if the project's all done and you already borrowed eight point five, but that's all pink, but that one point one two five will set there for that term and that, that uh, agreement of that loan.
With the interest.
But you don't have to borrow at all, you're only gonna borrow what you need and you're gonna pay interest. And after that five-year initial two point one two, then you go back to the, back to the sitting-down table and talk to the town, whoever you're talking to, and say, listen, why, you know, why do you wanna raise this to us? We're good customers, we have good banking, let's keep it where it's at, like we did with the Riverfront project, here's a good gem, and do the same thing. And he might come back at that time, if everything's going great, it might be a one point eight or a one point six, you don't know.
I, I just would be interested, so what, what this says is it's a one-year draw period, meaning that interest accrues only on.
The day you sign the contract is up.
But what happens to the remaining one point one two five after that first year?
Or you take there and that's it.
But you pay interest on the full of one point one two five, can you give it back?
No, you're only paying interest when you borrow. I want you to borrow when you borrow.
That's not what it says.
We're a bit too ahead right now, maybe you already borrow when you pay, pay for what you borrow.
But can you?
But one point one two five is your cap, that loan.
It's your loan amount, yes, so they're giving you a loan for that. So that's what I'm asking, if, if you go a year and you don't pull the full one point one two five, do you pay one year's interest on the full one point one two five?
The only way I got out of it, when I read it, you got it, you borrow, you use eight hundred thousand, that's what you use, pay interest on eight hundred thousand.
That, I, I just wanna, because that's exactly what it says for one year, but then it doesn't say what happens after the first year.
And it really, that, that could be negotiated too, because you don't know how long this project's gonna take you to do this project, is it gonna be done in a year or is it not in a year?
Five months.
When you're looking at next year, you're looking at your debt services already spent for twenty twenty, you've got one last payment left in that construction loan of fifty thousand dollars. You've got a forty-five thousand dollar loan coming for the Police Department building itself, and a lot of fourteen thousand dollar loan for the land up there with two or three years left up there to buy the tennis courts. That's your hundred thousand dollars of your debt service extra.
But doesn't the one point one two five include refinancing the amount that we just used to purchase the building? Because I thought the one point one two five included purchase of the building.
Several.
So this doesn't even cover the, the initial buying loan?
We already did a loan for that.
No, I know, but.
Right, so when I, when I kept, we had the, that meeting, we calculated out the budget for the renovation, the architectural engineering costs and all of that, and so one point one two five is the figure we came out, does not include the hundred and twenty-five for the building.
That's a three-year loan that we got, unfortunately, because.
So with the one point one two five here, so we take that loan out, can we still get the grant money for different projects? Or if you take this out, you're, you're kind of like, all right, we already have money for the projects already, now this is your backup.
That's the back, so we would continue to pursue grants and the grant writer is doing that and we're also, you know, local foundations are interested in what it is, how it is they can help. So that, the actual amount that we borrow may be much less than that, but that's the, the cap.
This is where it's based, you know, that we don't make one penny from any money.
So then what, I guess, then, are we gonna be in a hurry? I mean, I'm not saying there isn't a hurry, but, so since we have this money setting, is there a rush, all right, we have it, we're gonna get it done, we're not gonna wait for the grants, or is this gonna? I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Because you have to get the grants ahead of spending that money, right? So you can't retrograde, you know.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I said it so.
So we have to push, push, push to get the, get the grants and the support and then we'll, and. we'll, and then we'll see what we're left with and we have to borrow.
We can't.
I think we need your personal contacts with these banks.
If you're gonna reimburse all this debt, we can't do that.
I think we need to go walk in, knock on the door, hey, gotta talk to the, gotta talk to whoever, you know, and sit down and say, "Why don't you, why don't you go on this? Why don't you help us with this?"
If it's, if it's a 15-year loan, let's ask them to give us our here 15-year loan. That, you know, we might be surprised when we see what, what comes down that.
I don't think that's a, it's a 15-year amortization.
Well, I don't know, but I mean, I don't, I, I don't wanna tie the debt pairs up for 30 years either with a loan.
Kevin, what is? We get more grants. Kevin, what would be the debt service for the 30-years of 1.25?
I'm gonna tell you in a second.
Okay.
Chris, on this first line here, of course, it says it features a one-year draw period.
Yes, yep.
And I think what they're saying is you have one year, then we're done, the loan is existing and from there, there's nothing.
That's, that's what I would wanna just confirm, that they're not gonna then at the end at 366, say, okay, you didn't use the full 1.25 or 1.25, that you're not gonna get drawn interest on that full 1.125 for the first year. That's the only thing, and it says that within one year, you'll only pay interest on the amounts that are outstanding in principle, but just, just to be safe, I'd rather say that the remaining is forgiven essentially, it just goes back to the bank.
For 1.12, guys, for 30 years, you're gonna pay about a $50,000 one-time payment a year. And you'll be paying back 1.52 once, so you'll be paying back about $40,000.
That's what we got, good. And then Kevin, so what, so what is the total debt service that we have? I mean, taking out the 50, so what's left for other debt services?
Well, after, after this year or next year?
No, 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 like this, say, after, just say five years down the road, say.
Okay, right now, in January, we'll pay the last payment of the destruction of those 50-some thousand, that frees up that 50-some thousand. So you, you can cover it a little bit, then you're good for the debt service. Well, you're not gonna be able to do it next year unless one of you budgeted it in your own budget and cut costs and make it a line item. You're not gonna be able to do it with our debt service. Now what kind of debt we guys have to finish next year? Plenty of things.
All right, so debt service isn't available until 2022?
2020, 2022, yes.
Unless we find a way to tie the outstanding loan into this loan. Basically pay, pay off the loan.
We only got that one loan payment left, is that 50-some thousand?
No, no, I want the new building. Unless you, you put the new building into this loan, you, you take the new building out with a 30-year amortization and put it on top of this loan, so that we only have one payment of maybe 52 instead of a 45 or a 50.
So then along with it, you're gonna pay double for the building when it comes down to interest for 30 years with 1.125.
You have to see if you can work it to be able to pay off the principal of the building faster. And, and I don't know, you'd have to be able to see, that's where I would sit down with an optative bank saying, "We have this loan already, let's get creative, let's see if we can work something to pay the principal off." That's where the advantage of that comes in.
That's why we know, they'll say, "Yeah." Would you be agreeable to sit down with Kevin and Mr. Precious to go with and get some money? If, if the answer's to those questions?
Yeah.
Well, since now, Mr. Precious, you should be talking to every bank about these questions.
I agree with that, but we're questioning, we're questioning.
I agree though with Kevin that if, if nothing else, if we even enjoy doing, I would do whatever.
But let's, so let's, let's find out why these other banks aren't, the 15-years are gonna fight.
And we come back in two weeks and just see if they work this out.
Chris, I think right here they're telling us, they don't want a three-year, we want the 10 to 15.
No, that's, that's, they want you to fix it for that loan, because then they know that after that year, you have to refinance your remaining payments.
So who knows then?
Yeah, or you pay a balloon payment or cross that and pay.
Well, if you want you to spend it or something like that, this, this building should take 15 years. Realistically, I mean, if you want you to spend it and you meet this done, then we don't borrow any more money down the line for another million or something. But you never know what kind of problems or expectations are gonna come across.
Just depends on interest rates in the future.
Right now, they're bottom, bottom. I think that 2.12 should be at least another quarter lower, my eyes, because again, money away right now, it's one of those negatives.
You think that they are, but the problem is deceiving. So, I mean, mortgages aren't as, they're low, they're fairly low, but they're not, 2.1, that's a great rate. I mean, that is.
That's where we came on the construction loan, 2.12.
Yeah, that's a good rate.
Chris, just remember, since around the interest rates of areas of the country, our debt service, I think a lot more than that.
Yeah.
We can afford any more debt service.
That's the fear in five years. That's why the, the interest rate of a 10-year lock is a little dealing, because you would assume that the feds are gonna start raising the interest rates again, that you would hope that you might catch a 3% at that point. You were, I don't know, everyone's gonna be lower.
15 years is about where you're gonna cost us, but 88,000 a year.
That's where, that's where at that point, if we found grants and we could then say, hey, we only need 600, now we may be able to afford a 15-year, because that may fit into our $50,000 budget.
My next question, if we do, say we go out, we put in the heating and air conditioning supply to this building itself and we pay for that out of that loan, and all of a sudden a grant comes in, will Grant reimburse us that money for doing that work?
Yeah, there's very few grants that are gonna, that are gonna pay for renovation costs. Yeah, you're not gonna find.
Well, just using that for an example, Chris, I'm just saying, if we go out, we put a roof on, we go out, we buy equipment, and we spend our own money, is Grant gonna reimburse us that money back?
No.
So shouldn't we wait and see what kind of grants we get before we do something like this? And see if we can save money in the long run with this?
That's what Jody had said. So basically this is, we secure the funding so we know we have it and as we're looking for grants. Both things are happening in the exact same time. And then you're going out and looking for the grants that you're hoping, because we also can't wait too long, because police need something. You know, we, we can't just delay this forever because then we're starting.
You can't put the city in somewhere in a hell of a hole. Yeah, you gotta keep that in mind too.
Yeah, and you've said it over and over, the city's in a really good spot then.
Right, it will be in 2022, absolutely, it will be.
And then all the other debt is, is gonna be paid off in the years.
2022, correct, yes.
So I think, I think it'll just be like the next two years.
Table this because we will look around.
Exactly, yeah, we go, we go.
Attorney.
We'll make the motion around table.
Yes.
Be of 15 months.
Yes.
Well, make sure you reach out to the Northumberland Bank.
Yes, and, and, so there were, those were the four banks I sent to. So if we wanna circle back to them and find out why they didn't submit a proposal, plus, I believe Kevin just mentioned a couple of other banks that I, Fulton and something else.
West Milton.
West Milton, first, 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 first.
Okay, we'll do.
Jordan.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Isner?
I'm, just real quick, we had a meeting here today with Grocer Bear, head Grocer, about the project. Jody, you touched on it too. See, I, if, if everything goes as planned, and I said if there's no, no issues, I mean, obviously there will always be an issue, but I said if everything goes perfectly, we're looking at nine months, nine-month build outs. And obviously right now, the only thing we're doing, we started now, is really getting into the details of what each spot in the building, out of the building, that we're kinda looking at. So we're kind of in the early phases of even kinda worrying about construction, but.
Right, so we have to, there were some adjustments to the floor plan, this is normal, it happens in plenty of buildings. Looked at again, no, you don't need as much space there, you need a little more space there. So, so the next step is to finalize the layout again and then we'll go back to Co-Stars or whatever to get the quotes on the furnishings, on the evidence, uh, equipment and things. And those are the things that we're gonna most likely pursue for grant money.
Yeah.
Or the outfitting of the community engagement room.
And that money, that 1.125, that's included in that, like our evidence, our new evidence vault stuff, furnishings, camera equipment, IT, all that stuff is included in that. And again, that's worst-case scenario, we don't get $1. Sure, we're gonna get an origin approach, you know, by people to say, hey, what can we do? So that's, there are things already worked, it's just that, that's worst-case scenario, we don't get one penny from a public entity or anything. So I mean, I've heard a lot of positive things about doing this.
One thing is, we know there's entities out there that assist in, in funding and things like that, and maybe we're gonna keep it in the back corner, is knowing the importance of needing this project but not having the debt service available potentially, so maybe looking at funding those first two years through grant funding as well, and then maybe something we can start.
And some of the things we had talked about, with, you know, I know it's a big topic that's discussed right now as a police role, is to make it more community-oriented, not just, you know, police itself, the building. So that's, that's a lot of angles we're going with, is to try to show them that this is what we're doing to make a new face of policing scenario. I always said, I said it a couple of weeks ago, it's the smaller communities that are gonna show larger communities how it's done. And I think that's part of our future plan is to be more community-friendly with our building also.
This is kind of a question going towards the future, and there's always this talk of consolidation. For some reason, if we were to consolidate, could that building hold, how many officers in your opinion, do you think that building could hold if we consolidate, if, if somebody has the.
The way we have it laid out, that could easily hold 15 to 20 officers either.
So I, I, I was just curious.
Yeah, we, we really talked about that. We always talked about making sure that it's, it's big enough for expansion for down the road in case we would, because there's one officer in our apartment that's not for consolidation. This is, consolidation is a totally different animal. And you can talk to Chief Paul Yous up there and talk about it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of pain too, but we're, we're never opposed to that, because I just, it brings better service to make.
Yeah, I would, so I guess, I mean, I'm not saying down the road once again, so what's the guarantee, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm not gonna say that, so what's the guarantee the consolidation center would be in some area at this place?
There's no guarantee.
Do you, do you, you don't know that?
I'm obviously, I'm thinking, you don't know, I was, I was.
There's no guarantee.
How is that, any charity would have some kind of association.
Some, yeah.
Well, we, again, we have a valuable building within the city that's completely renovated, that's a marketable source if we did it.
I have to keep in mind, if we do consolidate in the time of the future, the city of some ways the largest municipality in the local area, so the larger police department wouldn't be located here most likely.
All right, Ms. Ocker, second reading.
Thank you, because I lost track of the room work. All right, so this is the second reading, Bill number 2020-04, which is the residential rental property ordinance, is to repeal and replace Chapter 134 rental property, which was adopted in August 13th of 2012 and amended December 11th, 2017. We had along the way a work session on the first of June and then we did the first reading, of course, on the eighth of June. There have been no additional changes incorporated into the, into the draft, into the bill since then. And that's all I have.
Any questions to talk this way?
Second.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Okay, this is the second reading, Bill number 2020-06, commercial properties. And this is new legislation. Again, we had the same work session on June 1st, the first reading was on June 8th. You see the description of the ordinance there, and there have been no additional changes to the, to the bill since the first reading.
I think we haven't done this one.
Second this.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. I could have jumped in here with what I added, agenda to begin.
Uh, yes.
So, we're recording on chestnut, so I know a little while ago, we had talked about coming with a plan prior to, I think it was September. But we know that one of the things that's always been discussed is that building we use for parking for the Albright Center. There's been multiple, a couple of meetings have discussed it, and it's been on the table for a long time. You guys are talking about it probably for 10 years at least. One of the things that's going on right now, SRI is starting the application process for RCAP funding from the governor's office in the tune of, I believe somewhere around $3 million. Senator Culber, Senator Gordoner have put it on the budget for this year for that funding to be available. So to be able to apply for it, you have to start the application process and show that you can do the 50% match. What we found out from Linda's office was that one of the things that can be used as match is property values. So it's come up again with that property, but that could potentially benefit the Albright Center even more now as being served as a parking lot and as a property that can go towards a match. So unless there's objections, one of the things that, within SRI, I spoke to Jeff Star, the president, also, I know there was a concern of what happens if the Albright Center is no longer the Albright Center. My request is that we allow Joel to start working up some kind of documentation, not vote on actually giving anything, but just seeing what our options are, to allow that to go into SRI, as we've just talked about for a long time, with the caveat that if it's no longer the Albright Center or not in SRI's name, that it comes back to the city. If the property's not torn down in, let's say, two years, it comes back to the city. If there's a snow emergency, that lot is able for people in the neighborhoods to be able to park to clear the streets. If street sweeping is going on, people are able to park in that lot to clear the streets. And then also for SRI to establish a permit process within SRI, residents of that neighborhood to be able to use that parking lot as they are now. There's probably eight to 10 cars, maybe that could roughen it park there overnight. So we don't wanna make it more inconvenient for them, but just put in some kind of permitting process to allow that to happen. So yeah, that, I, that's what my motion is, is to allow Joel to start looking into that process and not coordinating with him and anybody else can, unless there's any feedback or respect from this process now.
So that's, I was just gonna say, I second the motion to have Joel.
Yeah.
What I was gonna say is, any nonprofit, because someday, 20 years down the road, it might be a bigger nonprofit, suck that up.
Sure.
May not be the Albright Center, might be another, whatever.
Yeah, I see your point, so it can stay within that.
Home is a nonprofit when.
Yeah, benefiting the community.
Right.
Yeah.
Precious?
Yes.
Precious?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karmage?
Yes.
Reicher?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Ocker, report.
No, we're on one thing of the discussion agenda.
It's not on the agenda. It's on the back, very back.
It's on the agenda. Okay, so I understand that there's a fair number of bicycles sitting in the city warehouse and that previously we had done auctions to get rid of them before. And there was also kind of a hanging effort that superintendent of streets, DPW supervisor Steve Welker has been working on to identify surplus items that could be auctioned off as well. So I would like to discuss what would the council like us to do as far as scheduling the public auction, identifying items to be sold, any timeline that you would like to see us done.
That's something we've talked about for a while. Do you think it's realistic to do, like, a September auction?
Are they even holding live auctions now? Everything I've seen is every sign I see says an online auction. We go online auction, we're not gonna get the draw, I don't think we're gonna do it.
I think that I saw Douglas Barker.
Yeah, he's doing pretty well with his online auction. He might be somebody to reach out to for that.
It may be worth seeing what somebody's doing. Because I noticed they still are advertising their auctions online.
Yeah, I'll make some phone calls.
You can do it in person, one to maintain, I don't see how you would be able to maintain social distancing at an auction. I don't know, but we can explore it, maybe September.
I think September's a good time.
Yeah, especially if you guys are gonna be pulling that warehouse, I need warehouse space. Because I leave stuff down there, and we have a lot of stuff down that warehouse.
And that would, to just do both auctions at the same time would make sense, instead of advertising two auctions.
Yeah, because I have a tremendous amount of stuff down there, so.
Steve, the only thing I say is, when you sell anything that belongs to the city as capital, make sure you do it in this list where you sell, so we can report it, take it off the list for the auditors again.
Okay.
Right, so the whole process would be requiring you to do it in inventory. Yep.
And let me ask, in the meantime, the bikes we used to sell for $20, are they still available to the people or not?
You want a bicycle?
I thought the city was always waiting until the auctions to get rid of the bikes.
I think we've had some people that, we'll see somebody, they need a bike that passed their way, a great location, also down the hill, and they're able to pick a bike out of this town.
Take one.
Here's whatever you want, or whatever, they'll give, find out, they'll give 20 bucks to get rid of it. Bikes that sit down in a garage, trying to help some of the people out there that brought their bikes.
Maybe someone acquires their bike and they trade it.
I had one person.
Just get a bike.
Yeah, that's what we get a lot of comments, to hear about, take one, get it out of it.
But that would be giving it away for free.
Should we do that?
I think you can do that more than you can do sell it. Because don't you have to give, you have to give all the, you know, people an opportunity to bid, aren't they?
The only thing that I would ask, and I'd just refer to citizens, is to somehow advertise for the people that this could happen. So if one guy doesn't come down and say, I'll take every bike, and he takes them and then tries to sell them back and make money. Well, we did it for him, we had an auction, nobody came to bid, and the one who was called the bike guy from up in Miffler or something came along with a lot. He gives a deal, and he said, all right, or he said, bail him, just to get rid of them.
It's only a handful of people that has a bike, and I think we had three.
But it's two months away, I would recommend just waiting, that we can consolidate everything.
The only thing that I would like to get on record and request on that is, items that are sold from my department, the proceeds that come from that department need to be reinvested in my department, is that the process, correct?
Goes to general fund.
Goes to general fund.
So we can reinvest that by selling our equipment, like.
Like a truck, for example.
But say if I'm trading in a truck. If I traded in a truck, the value of that truck is essentially staying within my department. So what's the difference if I take equipment and I auctione equipment off, and I utilize that money to purchase other equipment? I'm doing the same essential transaction as trading in a truck.
Why are we just trading in a truck?
I mean, that isn't a damn.
I understand, the only thing is, it comes back to what we're talking about, the pay, the stamp program and all that. Any money that comes into the city, the best way to reallocate is to do an analysis of the entire city matrix being allocated to where it's most needed. So any money going into the general fund would then go out as it's most needed. So I don't think it would be right to just say, it's the same thing with blood removal and stuff. There's blood removal, it just goes right back into the general fund. Same thing with street cop permits, it's the same thing with anything we do, it goes back to the general fund, and then we allocate it as it's most needed outside of the city.
So I think the private.
Yeah, I think that's how you have to do it.
All right.
Easter.
It's done.
Well, it's something I was trying to call.
City administrators, report. These are the things we worked, we just talked about the CD, designing the CDVG COVID fund and the CDVG entitlement, we're still coordinating those processes through completion. Project management that I have on my clarinet is the police department building project. We did meet with the architect, and we just kind of discussed that with Chief Hare just a few minutes ago. The Reagan Street flood mitigation project has gone out to bid. Bids are due tentatively July 27th, but there may be an extension because the contractors are having some difficulties getting all of the information they need to give us an accurate bid. Some community outrage, just wanted to mention, were working complaints received? There were multiple complaints from the Fourth of July, from before the Fourth of July, up to now, even today. Someone called me about fireworks and the trash that it's creating in people's properties, on people's cars, and the noise, and it going on well past 11 o'clock. So I just wanted to make you aware of those.
And just real quick, if I could, and just so you're aware, regarding that topic, Chief Hare, this listener, myself, we have begun researching and discussing how to correct this issue.
Excellent. And then I did receive a complaint about speeding on Court Street, that's the 1100 block, you know, where there's some parking on the right. And the person was asking if they were permitted to put out their own speed books? They said no. But they would like, yes, to consider what we can do to try to curtail the speeding. They said there's people going way too fast, they're there with the kids playing in the alley. Did get a call prior to the protest or the demonstration on Sunday. There was someone that was concerned about it because of what had happened in Watson Town, wanted to make sure that we were well prepared. So I'm sure Chief Hare was completely well prepared, and it went out off without a problem. And then had a few calls about street signs, which DPW took care of. And then there was a complaint about the tax discount period and why we weren't extending that. Then, this is the update on codification. Again, trying to wrangle everything in and get it completed. We've had some of the first readings today and second readings today, gets us along that way. We have in green, those are the ones that have already been adopted and are ready for codification. And then there's still some others there that are hanging out there that we need to tie up. Hoping to complete by the end of September. The street siege management program that was mentioned this evening, I wanted to let you know that Representative Culver is engaged, and she has been checking with DCD every week to see if she can get that off somebody's desk, get it signed, get it off their desk. As far as community economic development, we've been meeting about the textile mill, weekly meetings with Glenn Raven, Focus Central PA. There is marketing in progress, they are developing leads, nothing, you know, firm, of course, yet. The former bakery on North 11th Street, the owner developer had reached out to me, and we're gonna talk about some of the things that might be beneficial to the city as far as the development of that property. And then the Sunbury Community Partnership Forum will be meeting on July 23rd at 2:00 PM. I've also met with David Rose, he's at the Sally Black Urban Design Consultant. He's expressed some interest in some properties, and so we'll be continuing those conversations. Also, I attended a webinar on the economic impact of upper floor housing. So this is particularly of interest, especially to our downtown. And given some tools that you can use to actually calculate the potential, in monetary terms, the potential of upper floor housing in downtown areas. So if in the future we're gonna be considering any changes to our zoning, this will probably be some good information to have when we are considering those kinds of options. We still have our municipal intern, he's working on the records management policy processes. He's been in the basement every day and sorting through our files and making good progress. We're doing the grant management on several projects, but especially the Fourth Street intersection, the traffic lights. And then the audit is still in progress for the 2019. Council finance, we're gonna be, the audit in progress and evaluating the budget and revenue projections. And then Department of Public Safety, residential rental inspections have resumed. The mobile food facilities, we've trained the staff, and they're beginning the enforcement for light abatement. They've been out there with DPW and by themselves, and with somebody doing community service. We're trying to take advantage of some free labor there to get the high weeds and grass and the trash out of there. We'll be scheduling, since we've passed these ordinances this evening, we'll schedule training on the new rental property and commercial property ordinances, and we're gonna have to develop and update the forms for that. Parks and public property, of course, the pool and the OPG reopening preparation, that was a lot of work, and I think that employees in Parks and Rec, Carl Yoder, Tammy Forbes, did a phenomenal job, and Ron Pratt did a phenomenal job getting the pool open. And it is open, and I understand that kind of attendance is a bit lower than previous years, but it's open. OPG opened this past weekend, I didn't know if anybody there was a great.
Eric.
And we want to thank Wise Markets and Chris Reece State Farm for their generous donations to cover the staff wages. Normally, those wages are covered by grants and FIA, and we didn't have money budgeted to be able to pay out of pocket.
Yes, I want to thank Chris, he called me up and said he had contacted Wise Markets and got that together. It was a total of $5,000, right? And I do want to thank you for, and it's free, but slushies over your place, you say.
So also, they've been doing the topsoil fill and seeding along Front Street. They did install the medication disposal drop box in Obabi of this building, and we've advertised that on Facebook for people to safely dispose of unneeded unwanted medications and keep them out of the hands of kids and teens. We've also planned for the installation of the pet refuse bag dispenser in Cameron Park. That was donated by Wake &amp; Wire, the coffee shop. And then I understand they're be moving on to cleaning up the median strip there on Wolverton Street.
Heard that today, or have we done it?
They're amazing. And then Department of Streets of Public Improvements, they did address for emergency calls. Those are things like signs knocked down. They did have to rally and get after some street sweeping on that day where they were doing the paving in the heat, and there was gravel all over the city streets. And so they rallied to do that, and then as a reimbursement from Hawbaker, they agreed to do some paving outside the Zamboni door at the rink. And so that was a good trade off.
That was good, Mr. Walker, thank you, sir. Welcome, Kentucky, to his place.
So the Department of Streets of Public Improvement is also, DPW supports a lot of the other departments as well, Police Department, Code Office, Parks and Rec, I mean, it takes a team. And so really, the good news story is a collaboration among the departments, you know, not operating solely in stovepipes, but really collaborating to get things done that need to be done.
Joey, I'd like to say something real quick, in going along with clean up the grass and stuff like that, I'm wondering, is Danny, that super magistrate to me is sentencing people to community service on the area yet?
He did one.
He did one? If that happens, that would be a big help.
Yeah, the one that he sent, it's already started.
Yeah, I have a gentleman down there that is doing a wonderful job.
And I think that's, there's a one-one situation.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, Eric jumped right on that as soon as he heard it, he's doing it, Eric started, you're not away, I'm working with the.
Yeah.
And Eric's been fantastic this year here on the lights.
Yeah.
He's been working with us, wonderful, he's been out there busting his ass.
Put a good process in place.
Yeah. Steve, tell me a funny part, the guy's sentenced to cut grass, was arrested for not cutting. Not cutting.
It's true justice.
Got it.
True justice. These are the streets projects that are ongoing. So we mentioned the Reagan Street with flood mitigation going out for bids. The Green Light Go, which is the intersections at Fourth and Arch, Reagan and Packer. GNR Charles is almost finished, they have to get the new poles in, and then they can finish up their work. Municipal Authority and UGI are done with what they needed to do at those intersections. And then TRO Electric, once the new poles get in, be hooking up the new lights. Announcements.
The city of Sunbury is accepting police officer applications to create a hiring eligibility list. Submission deadline is August 24th at 4:00 PM. More information is available on the city's website. Next Hart and Heritage 250th anniversary committee meeting is July 23rd, 6:00 PM in Cameron Park. The next council meeting is July 27, 2020, at 6:15 PM in the council chambers and Zoom. And there's one more announcement. I've really been thinking when this announcement should be made. And after some discussion with Frank Monzano, the group If Not Us Then Who, regarding people aren't really aware when political seats are out for reelection, or who's running, and so forth. After giving serious thought, having discussions with my partner, and review of current laws, makes today a very heavy day on my heart. I am saddened to announce that I will not be seeking reelection as mayor for the city of Sunbury in the coming 2021 election due to regulations of the Civil Service Act. If I were to seek reelection, I would be terminated or forced to resign from my current employment position. I'm grateful to the community members for electing me their mayor, supporting me along the way, and allowing me to serve this great community for four years, which will be at the end of this term, and to the exceptional public servants who have served and continue to serve on my staff. Achievements were the result of their talents and their tireless work and dedication for a better Sunbury. Serving as mayor for this great city has truly been an honor and pleasure. There is about a year and a half left in my current term, and I will continue to fight for the rights of all and for the prosperity of our great city for all who live in or visit. We have accomplished so much, and there is still so much more to do. I encourage those who wish to serve in this great city to prize us of your vision for our area and the priorities you will dedicate your attention to. Strive to overcome tolerance and recognize that only through mutual respect, rational discourse, and cooperation can we continue to build a stronger and lasting community while protecting the constitutional rights of all without discrimination. The reason I am bringing this up now is because this coming spring is the primary election for the city of Sunbury, and I would like the information to get out there so that we can see who would like to fill the seat. If anybody has any questions about running for election, if they haven't served in office before, my office is open, and I'm willing to sit down and discuss this with anybody. Now it's open to public comment, please.
Mayor, I have two things I can bring up real quick. That's where the public gets in with it. I want to bring up, in the police department, we have what we call Clean Termal, which is our live scan in our fingerprint station. The state this year finally caught up after 15 years of realizing they weren't charging the proper fees for the departments. So they're not going back and saying, you owe us this money. It's about $5,200 a year, it was not budgeted, but we wiggle over certain things. I ended up contacting the Lutheran County Commissioners and the Olive One Center, and I basically worked the deal out, and I'm gonna be able, I'm gonna be able to save about $3,500 a year on that cost going forward. So this year, we're gonna have some over costs, and there's an initial setup fee that I work with people to get this done. So going down the road, we're not gonna be paying the full $5,200, we're gonna be probably paying between $1,200 and $1,500 a year. I'm just lowballing it. So I'm gonna save money for the city going forward by getting this done with the county. I mean, the commissioners agreed to help us out, so I thank the commissioners for allowing me to do that, to keep this live scan machine, which is a very valuable tool and asset for the police department. The other thing is, the PLCB, we applied for a grant. We were awarded a $20,000 grant from now until June 2022. It's all on education enforcement of underage drinking. So it's gonna pay for education, enforcement, patrols, and equipment for underage drinking and alcohol violations. So we were awarded that grant, there's some final paperwork that's gotta be done with the Treasurers Office. Officer Carrot, I've applied for that grant with my blessing and got everything done. So we were awarded that grant, so within the next few years, we'll be using that $20,000 to help educate, do some enforcement for underage drinking and buying equipment. So I just wanted to give to the council and the citizens of the area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Any other public comments? Mr. Demos?
Hello, everybody. I'm looking here, so here, I'm watching faces, and I'm trying to make a change in the Sunbury for longer and education. When I think, in 2012, we have made a library, and I say it to be community colors. One way things for the library, the tribal communist Charlie Ross is coming, hanging him, and he's saying with Christine, who was an SRI manager, Christine, I don't remember the last name. Anyway, she was in the SRI. Charlie hugged me and said, congratulations, or whatever you say, for this town. And tell Christine, tell the senator, what's her name, who resigned, and the other one taken the place. The Italian guy was state senator.
Senator Boarder was.
No, no, the other one.
The representative.
No.
The Marino?
Marino, yes. Tell the Marino on June to start to make it community colors. They approved it, the grants was there, the architect coming, taking plans in the building, and after, everything happened. And I asked Mr. Senator Casey, who last time, ready to make a big deal, as saying, he visited the elementary school and talked about the kids for education and things, why he blocked the grants and dismissed to be the community colors in the Sunbury. And another thing, I complain about the newspaper, like, was too many times to tell my story, and they don't want to publish. And tomorrow, with your help, I'm gonna make a demonstration outside the door for the, what's her name, Krista Bauer, over there, because too many times I'm going over there, and he not let the reporters, he tied the heads of the reporters, and they not write the truth. Something happening here. They don't want, they don't want the progress for this town. They want to eat the carcass, because already the Sunbury is dead, and everybody tried to eat up from the carcass, the Sunbury, with porcupius and everything. Mr. Rex, last time you visited the building, and I tell him, I give the building for 10 years, rent free, just to pay the taxes, what you said to me?
No, I'll take it.
Oh, they fix your building?
I said, you have a, I'll tell you.
Oh, it's all right, if you get, you swear to help the Sunbury, all right? You know, that's two ways to start the Sunbury, the honey beans and the termites. I don't know how you have to like a honey bean or like termites when destroying the Sunbury.
I told you that if someone was gonna go in there, it is unsafe, because you told me there's a $75,000 gold problem in your basement. So you can't just give a first floor to somebody.
Who was responsible? Who was responsible for my, for my investment? Who was responsible for the ones, for the ones destroying the roof?
Not the city?
The city? Why the city changed the inspectors? The mayor person, he changed the inspector from the straddle because the inspector Jim Shues was so corrupted and signed the tickets and the building, and the roof was not correct. And I paid $10,000, $15,000, I don't remember, to bring special, to prove that. Last justice, it took it, it took it over five years to go on the court. And you know what the lawyers, the contractor said, oh, the water destroyed the building. Not the water, because he destroyed the roof and all the water coming down destroyed, destroyed the building. So to go on the court, you can find lawyer here. It's like vampires bring you blown. Nobody tried to help me. I wasn't a newspaper to write the truth, and they don't want to do it. Why? Criminal record crimes run the town here?
I can say that I've seen multiple articles in the newspaper publicizing your property, more than in probably any other property.
That's all for me. Everybody, you see, I have the building over there, and my next neighbor, that one put the car, was a majesty door. And I complained, called the department, and they said to me to find, to find somebody to look. The majesty door was there. And I called him, and I tell him, please don't park in the majesty door. All my tenants, who control the tenants? Nobody can find her. Why? What series? She wrote the city? She was in the, in the SRI after Christine. And that all the time I went over there, she said to me, you sell the building? You sell the building? For what? She takes the spot to, to help the Sunbury to improve, not to destroy. You might watch that. I called the FBI to investigate that things. Mr. Mayor person, I remember the lady at the bar across the street, she complained about the Chinese, and said, Mr. Mayor, Chinese, can't take pictures, pictures, and nobody come in my store. And here open the store at six o'clock in the afternoon, and the Chinese left. One o'clock in the, in the noon. And the mayor say, all right, we changed the rules. No more parking the bus. They destroy the Chinese. The same way they tried to destroy me, but I'm standing like the arrow. I stand like a hard case and I fight through my last breath. And I wonder, Mr. Mayor, like you say, you remember the first time when you met me here, and you say you tried to destroy my career? You remember? You complain, you complain about the gas here, and you say you tried to destroy my career, and you were so mad? And you say you hear something, say something. You see something, say something. I say something, I, I tell something, nobody hear me. That's the American dream? No. Please call the FBI to investigate. And tomorrow, I want to park in special for my car to demonstrate. I don't try to make a domestic terrorism. I want to be peacefully. And I ask the daily hours, if it's really daily hours and not toilet hours, to write the truth. Care about the city, not try to destroy it. Educated people. That's why we got crime here. Kill one, the other. You don't want that. The politicians try to make, how the monkeys make a loud, they notice them how to survive and the life.
Mr. Demos, your grievances are not with this council or the mayor.
No, no.
They, they care about everything in the city. I know that for a fact. But you're, you're yelling and shouting at the wrong people. They have nothing to do...
Who's responsible, commissioner?
We, the commissioners. You need to go to the county. If there's something to do with the community college, it is not with the council and the mayor.
Why the newspaper not write the truth?
But the, but the council has nothing to do with the newspaper, Mr. Demos. I understand your frustration, but...
I understand that. And I remember you've won, you're on, and my opinion, what the truth was there.
You've made your point to that. They, they can only do so much. If you have agreements with the paper, you need to go talk to the newspaper, not the council and the mayor. They have nothing to do with it.
Why the newspaper not write my...
But they have. They have written your story several times. I know...
No, 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 no. It was different. You remember last time they put in like homeless, like I was in Siberia, gray guys over there.
You're arguing, you're not getting anywhere tonight, okay? If you want to talk, I'll come down personally and talk with you tomorrow about your agreements with the FBI. They could not have the FBI investigate anything. That has to come from me or the DA's office.
And why the mayor changed the rules? Why the mayor changed the rules?
Nobody's changing rules, okay?
I'm Jonathan. I'm just diffusing this.
All right. Thank you. We will talk tomorrow.
Read that if you get a chance.
If you want to talk, we'll talk some more tomorrow. Come see me, please.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next time, right, the truth, the papers I give it to you, you better publish. Thank you. I don't blame you. Before I blame you, but now you write a half percent. Thank you.
All right, next. Jonathan.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first time at the town meeting. I'm live. My name is Jonathan Carnes. I just recently got my license to power washing the City of Sunbury. But I wanted to ask you, Mr. Mayor, about, you wanted to open up the parks in here. I've seen that you're opening up OBG, that's what it's called. Was there any sanitation done? Is there any rules or regulations that have to be done prior to letting the people or the children go in there for sanitation, like bleaching? There's parks that, I'm pretty sure have not been cleaned. I went to the park over at, next to the WLMCA.
Fort Discovery. From Fort Discovery.
Yeah, Fort Discovery. And I helped clean up because my children go there. But I still see that kids bring slushies, and they're dumping it. They're drinking beer cans there. I'm sure you guys are aware that that stuff is going there. But the main reason I'm here is to see if there is any rules to pressure washing any of the playgrounds, parks, sidewalks to the City of Sunbury.
Jim, first of all, back to the situation we're in, where now playgrounds were wiped down, proper solutions in New York, and power washing, people do that in-house. They have their own power washers.
Okay. What's up with sanitation? Can you guys, you, bleach is not like part of the safest thing to put there?
I didn't say bleach.
Oh, no, I'm just asking.
It wasn't a bottle bleach, no.
It's a disinfectant solution.
There's alcohol in it.
Okay. Well, I just thought I'd come and listen. I also got a business here, and then if anyone was interested in it for other reasons.
Power washing business, power washing homes.
Pressure washing homes as well as in commercial industry as well. But I have a special pressure washer that does hot water. So it was just up there that they help sanitize. They use a pressure washer that allows the water to get to 185 to 225. So anywhere between there and just, any type of germs, mold, gum off the streets. I did two places here in the City of Sunbury, that is commercial, OIP, and the dental office. So that's on record.
Do you have a business card or a service?
Oh, I actually do. But it's better than a business card because people just, you know, do everything with it. So there's one for you. I'm not going to try to take everyone's talking, but I definitely was here sweating. So if I got more, maybe we can invest in the AC for the guy.
We're on a tight budget.
Yeah. There's $100 on Facebook.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience comments?
I have, I have a complaint.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sandra Heine. I live at 524 Chestnut Street. You did talk about, you're going to talk about fireworks now that we've already gone through this. But on July 4th of this year, I made a call to the Sunbury Police Department about fireworks being shot off in the Port Street alley between the 500 block of Chestnut Street and the Degenstein Library. No response was made. The fireworks were continuous from at least 4:30 p.m. to 12:15 a.m. They weren't all illegal fireworks. I mean, some of, most of them were just annoying. It was probably around 8:30 or 9 o'clock that the big ones that go up and all of that were starting going off. It, basically, it became dangerous. I don't know how wide the alley is there, but it was, the fireworks were being shot off in the middle of Port Street, in the middle of the alley. They literally, this is the ash from at least one of them that went off, landed on my car. There's more. Everybody on the street's car was covered with ash from these things. My house is the newest house on the block. It's a mere 96 years old. The rest of them are 100 years and well over. It was a fire hazard. On Monday, I called the police department, because nobody showed up. On Monday, I called the police department. I talked to the lady in there, and she said, well, they were busy. Well, granted, it's a holiday and law enforcement is busy on holidays. But we're also, not even a block and a half, they could see these fireworks going off. There was that group and then behind the American Legion between the corner of the library parking lot and the American Legion, there were more fireworks going off over there. It's a fire hazard. It's a danger to lives. I called 911. There was no response. I talked to the lady, and she said, oh, if I was worried about fire, I should have called the fire department. I always thought you called the fire department once you had a fire, okay? Anyway, after the big fireworks went off, they went on to shooting off Roman candles, holding them in hand. They were shooting them at the library. I watched them bounce off the walls of the library, get the windows that are up high, and land on the roof. So anyway, I guess, it's too late for this year, but I've got some questions for you. And this is from talking to people in my neighborhood. The first one, I've got five. The first one is, is it true that the Sunbury Police Department does not respond to nonviolent crimes in my neighborhood as I have been told on several occasions?
Again, it's a problem, you know?
Okay. Which part of State Law 2017, Act 43, does the Sunbury Police Department actually enforce? Because it says even consumer fireworks need to be 150 feet away from any occupied building. These, they weren't. They were less than 10 feet.
Going back to your earlier question, you say that we don't respond to nonviolent crimes in our neighborhood?
Yeah.
We respond to violent or nonviolent crimes. I can say that every time.
Okay. They didn't respond to this one.
I'm pretty sure that was the one, well, you got that. I don't mind.
I'm sure it's not, but there were across Market Street, up on Seventh Street.
They were all over town, yeah.
Across, well, they've been going on for two weeks.
Yep.
Two weeks before me. And they're the same people.
We talked about Black Need to. We started to help this place from our hunting.
Anyway, she told me to call the fire department. I asked specifically, I asked her specifically about City of Sunbury code. She said, I'll have to let you talk to an officer. I said, fine. An officer called me back within an hour. I asked him about it, and he said, oh, I don't know about fireworks. I work days. Yeah.
Clarify the code for her.
Hmm?
Clarify the code for her.
Oh, do you want the code clarified?
No, I don't need the code. I know the code, and I believe the chief and chair will clarify that for me.
Right here.
Right. Title 72 talks about Black Need. We are working on it.
And I did leave a message for you last Monday, and I still have not received your reply.
There are. My list of all the cases.
Okay, I figured you were when you didn't call. Okay, I'll give you that. When, when are we supposed to call 911 for things like this? Just let it go until somebody's house catches on fire? It's an old area of town. One of those houses catches on, and it's going to be the whole block is up in flames.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. The issue with the firework calls right now, the way the ordinance is integrated up, by the time the call was placed, by the time an officer is available to go check out that call, the people who shot off those fireworks are gone. Majority of the time, those people are gone, or you don't know who actually shot it off. We're in discussions regarding trying to create an ordinance to hold the property owners or the tenant of the property that it was shot off at liable for shooting it off, or anybody on their property shooting it off. So we are diligently working on it.
Yeah, because they were out there from, at least they got home at 4:30. At that point, Port Street was still open. But my neighbors has told me that they were completely blocking Port Street, and they couldn't get into their driveways.
And 4th of July 9th, I'm with the community. I hear your concerns. Right outside my home on middle of Arch Street, the big airshow fireworks, people were shooting them off, shooting them off in the middle of Arch Street. They, the entire city this year was like World War III with the fireworks. So we're going to ensure that this does not happen again next year. Thank you.
Just to make a statement, my name is Richard Saul Jr. I'm from the Sunbury Eagles 503. Just before I get into mine, I mean, Kurt, I understand what you're trying to say there about trying to get an ordinance to, if someone comes over and likes a firework off in front of your house, I think that's wrong. Because we have somebody that's in our area, and I'm not mentioning no names, that he will do these illegal and put them in front of my house. So if you're saying that if he comes and put it in front of my house, and I get a fine for that, that's not right. Especially if I'm in bed sleeping. I don't think that, that ordinance is going to be very good.
No, so it's just referencing...
It's always a brainstorming we're looking at.
Right, I understand.
One of the things I'm looking at is, first off, we're not going to be able to set them off on city streets, thoroughfare, or alleys, anything like that. So that's going to cover a lot of the streets. The other thing is, is you're the homeowner.
Right.
You're the landlord, you're the homeowner. And again, this is just food for thought. You're the homeowner, you sent, if somebody's setting fireworks off, you're part of it, okay? And if we can pinpoint who actually is lighting the fireworks up in your home, the homeowner or the landlord is going to get fined. Again, that is some of the brainstorming we're trying to figure out how we go about. If you have nothing to do with it, if somebody across the street is coming lighting in front of your house, it's not you. It's the person that's lighting it off, that household. And we have witnesses that are going to have to testify and pinpoint that. They're the ones that are lighting it off. So if somebody doesn't take ownership of the people lighting it off, they don't get the fines. It's going to be the homeowner, the property owner, or the landlord, or the tenant. That's who's going to get whacked.
If they're part of the group that are in the act.
Correct. Those are some of the things we're looking at. But again, it's just the ordinance that we have now, the books is outdated. We're going to go off the State Law, and we're going to, we're going to curtail it to what the city needs.
For what I took that, I mean, I, I understand what you're trying to, you're going to try and do, and I appreciate that. But the reason why I'm here tonight is, I mean, I understand running this COVID thing, and Sunbury Eagles right now are planning to try to do something for our, like we did last year in August. Last year in August, we had a ban outside, and with all this stuff going on, we're not sure of the way of the regulations, what we can and what we cannot do. Last year, we had a chicken barbecue. We had one of our patrons that has this big machine, and he's willing to do this again for us. And we want to know if we would be okay to do something like that this year again, even though we have this COVID going on. I mean, I've seen that the Goodwills had a chicken barbecue last, last week. They sold over 400 halves. They hit a great cut. Now, we're trying to give back to our, our Eagles again this year of doing another chicken barbecue. We want to know, it's going to be either the 22nd of August, a Saturday, or the 29th. We're not quite sure of the, of the date yet. I understand, I guess you can't have a ban planning like we had last year, but if, I mean, if we can, that's what we're going to look into.
So you can do what you did last year. It's just the recommendations right now are try to avoid 250 people at one time and one location, okay?
They can't maintain distance.
They have to wear masks. They can't maintain distance.
So the city's not going to stop private organizations from hosting their...
I think East End has one on August 1st.
That's the reason why I came here, because we wanted to know if we can do that. Because last year was a pretty good success. And so we're going to, we want to reach out, put it on TV, put it out in the community, so hopefully everyone will support it. So...
Is it, Kurt, is, now, if we call correctly, didn't you ask for some streets to be blocked off or something?
Probably, as of right now, we'll probably do... Um, probably, as of right now, we'll probably do the same thing. We'll reach out to Mary and Bruce because they took care of that last year. They blocked off, I think it was Port Street, going down here.
So you do have to apply to the city clerk's office to close down the street?
Okay. So we'll just have to do the same as we did last year.
Make sure you do that a month in advance?
Yeah, soon. We actually, we were going to talk about this Tuesday, but this Tuesday's meeting was canceled. So it probably wouldn't be, so if it's the 22nd or 29th, our next meeting would probably be around the 29th. So it'll be approximately a month. So it'll be pretty close to the time.
Yeah, our next meeting is 27th.
27th.
Yeah.
Play that State Road, it's up in there.
Anything else? Any other audience comments tonight?
Just one comment. Bob Miller, if you want a power washer, you got a guy sitting right aside you that does a terrific job. You don't need anybody else.
Is there any comments online?
No.
All right, with that, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming.
I didn't tell him to say that to you.